Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for May 10th, 2011. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ms. Ann Mayer?
Here.
Rebecca Emerson?
Here.
Dexter Legg?
Here.
Carol Chelman?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Schulman?
Here.
Tom Martin?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Clay Haywood?
Here.
Linda Brulette?
Here.
Savannah Fedaro?
Not here.
Not here.
Playing tennis, not here.
Thank you very much. If I could ask you to all rise. We have a moment of silent reflection, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of April 12th, 2011?
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment. There was a...nobody's signed up, so they will just move right along to our special presentation, which I'm really excited about. So I'll turn it over to the superintendent. Welcome. We have Ms. Modurn, I think Ms. Wempel, and I saw Ms. Hebert out there, I think, as well, who are...they're here to kind of present their three trips off to Costa Rica, Spain, and France. So welcome, and I don't know who's first, Nancy, but... Great.
So I just want to say we had three very incredibly successful...I don't know if this is working, but doesn't matter. Really great, great trips due to the amazing organization of the teachers. I can't take credit. Helene and Meg Martin organized Costa Rica. Immaculate and Jeanette McDonald, and I helped as well, organized France. And Tara and Carmen Duran, who I'd like to introduce you to, is our liaison and organized the exchange trip to Spain. So we'll start with the students from Spain first, and then Costa Rica and France. And we'll try and be brief, but please ask us as many questions as you guys want.
Thank you.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Carmen Duran, who worked closely with Tara. It is her city in Cátedes that's connected to. And it's important to know that one of the things about these trips that makes them so incredible is that there is a connection there already. Helene has a connection in Costa Rica. Immaculate has a connection in France and Belgium, and Carmen has a connection in Cátedes.
Hello, good evening. I saw Carmen Duran. She said, "I'm a native from Cátedes, Spain." That's where I'm the one who set up the program, along with Tara Hebert. So I'm the one who is responsible to take these kids over there. I'm very happy to share my hometown. As she said, we have a very close connection over there because that's the town where I grew up. My family is still there, and my closest friends are still there, so I feel very comfortable taking the kids over there. So Oliver and Rebecca came with us, and they are gonna be doing the introductions.
Thank you for having me. My name is Oliver Shag, and I too went on the Spain trip. I'm just gonna briefly discuss the excursions we went on during the day. One of my favorite ones was when we went to Merida, which had an old Roman amphitheater, which we got to go explore in and walk around. That was really cool. That showed us a lot of history, the natural history of Spain as well. Another one we went to...what was that natural park called?
Los Barrecos.
No.
Los Barrecos?
No, 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 no. Los Barrecos.
Los Barrecos. If that means anything to you.
It's a natural park.
The formations that you see are just amazing. Like, they put the White Mountains to shame. All these...this giant lake surrounded by all these...the cranes there, like the natural...the bird of Spain, what are they called? The... Storks.
Storks.
They're nesting all around. It's really, really cool. It's really natural. It's really awesome. And then one of my other favorite trips was just walking around the city of Cátedes, just because it's a really natural...not natural, but an old city that it's...I mean, it's old. There's bars and stuff inside. It's just...you can walk all around, and the castles and stuff. It's just...in the... the coolest part, my favorite part about that was the layers of different history that you have. Like, you have... The medieval. It goes Romans, Greeks. You can actually see them building it up. And that was honestly one of my favorite parts, is just seeing the different structure. So that's about it. Thank you for your time, and I hope you guys are able to pass it in the future.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca, and I'm talking about the homestays. The homestay was my favorite part of the trip because I stayed with a girl who was my age in the same grade. She had a little sister who was seven and an older sister who was 17. And my mom and dad were great. The relationship we formed, I think, will last forever. I still email them today, and they want me to come visit next summer, and I hope to go back and live with them. I want to go to, like, study there, drink college, so hopefully I can visit with them. They want to take me to Paris and Rome. And you just, like, form a bond that you will never forget with them. It was really hard saying bye. Everyone was crying. It was really sad, but we know that we'll see them again in the future, so that was bittersweet. Yeah, it was really great. I loved it.
Thank you.
I am John Hebert. For me, I went on the trip not knowing practically any Spanish. I took Spanish 1. I was a...I took French up to, like, level 3. So I barely knew any Spanish going on the trip. And at the beginning, I was really nervous. Like, I didn't know how things were gonna go. I was...I thought it was gonna be, like, really awkward because the family I stayed with, they didn't really speak any English, and, I mean, nobody there really spoke any English. So I was...I was really concerned that I wasn't gonna be able to communicate and tell them what I needed and whatever else that I need... yeah, whatever else. And on over the two-week stay, like, the language barrier wasn't really a problem. It was...it was just an experience that I'll never forget because it was like putting us on the same plane. Like, it wasn't...I don't know, it was just something that I can't really, like, describe in words. Like, the way that we were able to communicate through, like, hand motions, and I could say, you know, like, one thing, like, "Oh, this is good," and even though I meant something completely different, he knew exactly what I was talking about. I don't know, it was just...it was just an amazing experience, and I hope that we can keep this going and give other students the opportunity to have this kind of experience, because I know it was definitely life-changing for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
So we got some pictures for you.
This was when we first arrived, the day after a long, what was it, 14-hour...like, 14-hour plane... six-hour plane ride, then a four-hour bus ride to Cátedes. This is when we all hung out in front of the school.
This is part of my homestay. I went out to my family's castle, which is where all their other families, and we went exploring, like, the old parts of it.
Do you want to give the mic? You need to actually be on mic, because nobody can hear you. So give her that one, and you can speak into the other one.
These are some of our classmates we hung out with. The middle one is the one he stayed with, Kiko. That's the one in the leather jacket is Bea, and then the one on the right is actually a Canadian exchange student that we were able to meet and greet. And then that's Mr. Aronstein up top. I think everybody knows who he is. Just press the button. The one on the right? This is what I was talking about. This is the Roman amphitheater in Merida. We all got to sit there, and there's Carmen talking and all of that. And those are...the coolest part were those statues you can see. There's one on the top, and there's one on the right. Those are all...those have all been there forever. Again, that's looking down into it, all of our group.
I don't know what's wicked cool about that is that, like, even though it's thousands of years old, that they were able to make it so it has perfect acoustics. So no matter where you're, like, sitting in the stadium, that you can hear perfectly, and it's just crazy.
Touch the pad. There you go. This is...
This is the museum.
This is...this is just...
Part of it.
What is it?
This is the old part of the city.
Looking down into the city. Is that called?
Yeah, that's Cátedes.
This is Cátedes?
Yeah.
Oh, there's... That's me and Darby and Bryn. Those are the two of our other people that weren't here tonight. Those smiles just were a perfect representation of our trip overall. Oh, that's...
That's inside of a museum. It's a representation of what Easter...Santa, Easter time is like...
It's just like a parade thing. This is more of the...
The old city.
Yeah, more of the old city, like all the castles, the stonework. Oh, what was it? That was just a statue.
Statue where you kiss the feet.
You rubbed the foot.
And you fall in love.
Yeah.
This was Los Barrecos. We went to a really strange art exhibit here.
Oh, yeah, the natural...the modern art exhibit.
It's pretty interesting. This is my little sister, Sophia.
She was crying a lot when we all had to leave. That broke me down.
This was Sevilla. I went with my homestay family.
This is the city south of Cátedes.
That's Sevilla. It's the Cátedes.
This is the girl I stayed with, Elinita, and it was near an glacier.
It's on the montaña, no? Yeah, it's the top.
Here's all of us. This is both...
Yeah, we did a night tour through the old city.
Yeah. It's been...these are both kids from Spain, and it's mostly kids from the United States, just about to go, and it's like having excursion through the old city at night.
That's Trujillo. It's a small village, like, 20 minutes away from Cátedes. It's another medieval city, and that's where the big ass castle is. I don't know if it's a picture of the castle, but you guys seem to have a great time there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's my mom.
Oh, those are the nuns we saw.
Yeah, those are the nuns.
They were selling cookies.
They made sweets. Home made sweets. They're very good.
That was...that was really cool. Yeah, they sold cookies to us, and...
Yeah.
They were...I forgot about that.
Yeah, very good. That's Trujillo.
This is looking down from the castle in Trujillo. That's like the square.
That's where Francisco Bifaro was born, in that city. And that's... And that's the castle.
Yeah, that's us walking around the castle. That was...that was a lot of fun, actually, just running around and seeing everything. And that's it? Alright, thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Helene Wempel, and I led the Costa Rica trip, along with Meg Martin. And these are three students who are gonna talk about the trip. This was our sixth trip to Costa Rica. We go to the Osa Peninsula in the southern zone. It's very different from the Spain trip. It's in a small village, and the similarities, they also do homestays, but it's a little bit more focused on community service and internships in town, living with the families, and working together with the people at their small businesses, and learning what the people in that area of the world do. So we had a movie, but it's not working, unfortunately. But I'm gonna have these three students talk about kind of three different aspects. We have the homestay aspect, and the activities aspect, which is basically the rainforest hikes, and the farms we visited. And then they also had the opportunity to visit the elementary school, teach classes, the high school, and do internships with local businesses. So I'll have them talk about each of those aspects.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Peterson, and I'm gonna talk about the homestays. I guess, first of all, like, you can understand in, like, a concrete way how people live in Costa Rica, like, from pictures, or even when you're driving on the side of the road there. But, like, you cannot understand, like, in an abstract sense, like, how people actually live the way they live there. Like, especially coming from Portsmouth, it's such a nice place. Like, going to Costa Rica and being with my homestay family there, like, their house was nothing more than like a shack to us, like, made out of concrete. It looked like an unfinished house. And, like, when I stayed there, my little brother, who was 15, he gave up his bed for me, and he stayed in his mother and father's bed, like, all three of them. It's no more than like a full-size bed, so I could have his bed. And it was just like the generosity that these families had was unlimited. Like, I'd be like, "Oh, my god, this is such a cute necklace," and they'd be like, "Here, take it, take it." Like, it was just...I was like, "No, no!" But it was just ridiculous how generous they were, and how much they wanted you to be a part of their family. And just being with them made me get, like, a whole new sense of kind of life, and like, not taking things for granted. And, I mean, I got to have, like, a little brother. I had one brother who lived in the house, and an older brother who kind of lived out of the house, but down the road. I also had a sister who was 19, so she was a year older than me. But, I mean, I only have a sister, so I've never been able to have, like, a little brother. So him and I kind of bonded right away, and, like, over coffee, because, you know, the coffee there is great. And just, like, to break the ice, I just, like, sat down one night, and we started talking, and it was difficult at first, the language, but, I mean, he was just so eager to get to know me, and leaving was really difficult, and I definitely want to go back and visit them again. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassandra Haeckel, and I'm a senior. And I'm gonna be talking about the community service aspect and the internships that we did there. And ever since I was a freshman, I really wanted to go on this trip because of the community service aspect it had. And so when I was a senior this year, well, junior, and I applied, and I found out I got in, I was really excited. And when I got down there, the community service that we did, we first...we rejuvenated and cleaned up a hostel that we had stayed at. We painted all of the rooms, the bathrooms, the bedrooms, the hallways, so much. We shellacked the wood. I didn't even know what shellacking was, but I did it. And then we also built a bookcase. Each of us took turns. We sawed, we painted, we nailed this huge wooden bookcase to bring to a school that is in the middle of the rainforest, like, way up in the middle of the hills. You wouldn't be able to find it anywhere. And there are just...there are seven kids, all in, like, different grades, ranging from, like, 6 to 12. And some of them have to walk, like, an hour and a half just to get to school. And they...we got there just in time, because their bookshelf had just been eaten by termites. So we delivered that bookcase. They were really happy, and we even filled it with a bunch of books that Portsmouth High School students made. That was bilingual. It had English and Spanish translations. And we read the books to the kids, which was one of my favorite parts. And we also did internships while we were there, for two days, for two hours. I internship... I interned at a bakery the first day. It was very different. I...when I first got there, I thought I'd just be eating the entire time. That's why I wanted to intern there. But I did have to do some work. I had to clean. But I did get to eat a lot, which was nice. And everything there is just delicious. Then the second day, I went to one of the schools, and the schools there are very, very different than here. It's not as strict. There's barely any rules. It's just a very different experience. And I got to sit down in one of the business classes. And it was just...it was definitely a life-changing experience, and thank you for letting us go on the trip. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trevor Oxom, and I'll be discussing just...well, I...when you think about Costa Rica, you think about the rainforests, and it's completely different from here. So, ah, the...well, most of the places that we went involved, like, a 30-minute to an hour hike, since it's just so rural, and it's out in the middle of the rainforest, where, of course, there's monkeys and poison tree frogs, and just everything that you read about, and it was amazing. And ah. Well, some of the places that we went to through these hikes were...one time, we went to a tilapia farm where we got to fish for... we got to go fishing in a little man-made pond, and then ate the fish that we caught afterwards. And also at the tilapia farm, we helped to plant assorted plants, like pineapples, and, what were some other...banana trees, and...
Yucca.
Yucca. And it was just...they...it didn't seem like it was much, but they...they were not...they just couldn't show their gratuity enough for...or their ah gratitude enough afterward. Another place we went to was a...the plantation of one of our guides, Gustavo, who he gave...he gave us tours around the rainforest that...they were an hour and a half in 90-degree weather, that you were drenched by the end of it. But it was seeing the monkeys, like, jumping around above you, and ah, just all the different plants and animals. It was just amazing. It was...it was just seeing how different the...how different everything was in Costa Rica from just the rainforest was inspiring. It makes me want to go back there and also see what else the world has to offer. So, yeah, I'd like to say thank you again for allowing us to go this year, and I think it'll be an unforgettable student...or an unforgettable experience for other students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marcus Weil, and basically, in France, we went to three different, entirely different, like, worlds. So we're gonna let each people explain each world.
And here's Greg with Nice.
Okay, so obviously, we landed in Paris when we first got there, and we took a six-hour train ride to Nice, on the south coast of France, on the Mediterranean. I was...I loved Nice because it was different than what I expected from France. Usually, when you think of a Mediterranean country, you think of Italy, Greece. But when I saw Nice, like, being from Greece, I thought I was in Greece. Like, I couldn't believe how tropical it was, because usually when you think of France, you think of not tropical. I just thought it was amazing how, in April, the beaches were amazing. It was, like, there were palm trees, and I just couldn't believe it. Being near the Alps, it was just so mountainous and so scenic. After Nice, we took a bus to Monaco, which is approximately 15 minutes away. And it was just interesting to see, obviously, Monaco's a different country. It was different than...it was very different than Nice, because Nice was more touristy, while Monaco was more...it was very rich and more like a business district. It was interesting to see how wealthy Monaco was. You must have seen, like, over 10 Ferraris, Lamborghinis, everything. I mean, the average person had, like, a Porsche, mansions, and just...it was scenic again. We went to an aquarium, and just people were so kind. And that was...we only stayed in Monaco and Nice for two days, so that was basically all we did. And it was a great experience. Thank you for having me today.
And here's Will with Paris.
So after Nice, we took the very long ride on the Tejeve up to Paris, which was, I thought it could be a little, like, feel like a long time to just be sitting in one place, but the scenery we got to see along the way between Paris and Nice, we pretty much covered most of the length of France. And that was actually one of my favorite parts, was just to be able to sit there and watch the scenery. So we finally got to Paris, and it was really late, and we pretty much crashed. But then I'm not...I'm...it was so great the whole time. I can't even keep the day straight, but we went to see a bunch of different, I guess, sort of more touristy things. Like, we went to see Versailles, which was really cool, especially for the Apusch kids, after learning about the Treaty of Versailles, to actually go there and see. This is where they signed it. We also went to see Notre Dame, Montmartre, the Louvre, the Musée d'Orsay. Just like a bunch of these really historic places, which show a bunch of the really awesome French culture. But we also just had plenty of time to wander around and get to know the city for ourselves, which I really think like, and I think other people like that, too, because at first, we sort of...it was more like the teachers sort of holding our hands, like, how... this is how the metro is, like, how you read the map, how to get places. But then, by the end, we were able to go off on our own and navigate the city by ourselves. And I thought that was, like, a really valuable learning experience, that we were able to sort of take a more independent step. And also, I didn't really expect to speak French that much. I mean, I know I should on the trip, but like, among the other Americans who we were with. But I actually made, like, an effort to speak French to them, and some got a little annoyed occasionally. But I found it, like, really, like, a really fun challenge to try to communicate all in French. And there was one day where I almost succeeded in speaking entirely in French. And but also, I think we all kind of surprised ourselves with how we were able to communicate with the French people who lived there. And like, it was just like, wow, we only started a few years ago learning French, and we're able to communicate with them. And although it's not really the same what you learn in the classroom, like, we sort of had a solid ground to, like, a French, and then we were able to sort of expand on that, and get a lot more practice by listening to French all the time, like, listening to people speak it, trying to speak it ourselves, and just all the signs in French and everything. It was really immersive. And so after that, we went to Normandy, and Marcus is gonna tell you about that.
Yeah. So the morning of Normandy, we arose dark and early, because it's cloudy, but we took a slightly shorter Tejeve ride to Cherbourg. And from there, we saw Mont Saint Michel. It was low tides. It was spectacular. You could see for miles. And then, oh, we went to a carnival. That was...that was a high-class carnival. Then the next day, we saw Omaha Beach, Juno Beach, like, the beaches. And we saw the graveyard, which was a humbling experience. It's exactly what you'd think. It'd be like, there's crosses and Star of David's just everywhere. It's a sad sight. But I found that it was a good learning experience. And after that, we left, and we went back to Paris for a night, and that was the trip. It was a sad...sad leaving France. I think I can speak for everybody on that.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Oh, you have photos?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
So, this, this is Moni, our Nice, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. The first day we were in Nice, it was very, it was rainy, like the only rainy day we had all vacation was the day we went to Nice and Monaco, which was a little unfortunate, but, weather. That, this, I was not expecting the amount of palm trees in Nice that there were, it's very, very tropical. It doesn't look too tropical right now, but it is, it's very. The Mediterranean is very, very blue, like, I was not prepared for the amount of blueness. And one thing most people don't know about Nice is it's got a very impressive skyline, it matches right along with the Alps. Monaco, sorry. Yep, no, that's Monaco. That's the aquarium, the clownfish. And that, that's Horizon. That is an eccle, or a church. Eccle is French for church. That's also in Monaco, it's looking down at the yachts. Emily Quessel? That's statues in front of our hostel, which were...
You couldn't really decide what sort of mental creature it was.
I'm pretty sure they were lions because they kind of had the mane, but, I mean, it was left, left open to interpretation. Madame? This was the beach that we, the beach that was closest to us had a great view of the, the coves and the cliffs. This was the hostel in Paris that we stayed in, it had a very modern look to it. That is, oh yeah, that's Sacre Coeur. Sacre Coeur. Yeah, that's, it's a picture. To everybody. The three Madames. The four guys. As you can see. It's a great, that's a great shot of the Eiffel Tower, I think. Oh yeah, this is a cool thing about the Eiffel Tower, on the top, they have these big like searchlights, but there are other places on the ground that have them, so they collide midair. Put on a light show, it's pretty cool. This is a shot from the top of the Eiffel Tower, looking over the Seine. Metro. That was Mont Saint Michel, that was spectacular, the day we went there. That, those were the craters in front of the forts at Omaha Beach, the cliffs, there are craters everywhere. It's a D-Day memorial. Those are the, those are trees, yeah, that's trees at the Garden of Versailles, that's the memorial. And yeah, pretty much wraps up our trip.
Are there any questions people want to ask?
Can I come next time?
Yeah.
To all of them.
As long as I can come to.
Well, we want to thank you for taking the time to come out and sharing your experience with us. It looks like everyone had a great time. Putting yourself in a place you've never been before is always an interesting experience. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Thanks. What's that?
The computer.
Well, I don't, but I'm just saying.
Great. Well, thanks again.
Thanks.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, member of the board, members of the board, you have the board and administrator for April. You'll also find notice that New Franklin meets criteria to be able to participate in the state's fresh fruit and vegetable program. And it's really a factor of the percentage of free and reduced children who attend there. And so we're gonna be able to augment snack time with fresh fruits and vegetables throughout the school year to a tune of some thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. So I know Principal Shea's gonna go on a vegetable and fruit spending spree, basically, which will be wonderful. Mr. Stokel, just wanted you to know, he'll be sending you a more formal invitation, but we're asking you to save the morning of June 6th, in which he's planning to do the groundbreaking ceremony at the middle school, it'll take place at eight AM and I think no longer than an hour in length, so if you can attend that day, I know he would appreciate it as would the students. You have in correspondence, a letter from Ms. Krajjak, you might remember her, she's an English teacher at the high school who actually did much with the iPod Touch technology and in fact, last September, I think we saw her presentation on Walden and technology and Thoreau. Unfortunately, she submitted her letter of resignation, because of family issues, her husband is moving to Pennsylvania, so we wish her well in her new endeavors and we accept her resignation with regret. You also have a letter from school physician, Dr. Turner, essentially wishing, there's three points to his letter, the most, he talks about wishing to forego his stipend as the school physician. He's shared some information and an article on the importance of daily physical activity and the connectedness to improving academic performance and we've actually had a conversation about that at our most recent wellness committee meeting. And then another issue that I'll basically share with Kim McNamara and city officials regarding the Seabrook Power Station and some precautions there. You also, I wanted to just quickly share with you a letter that the chairman wrote and it was actually shared at city council through a member, Chellman. Basically, sharing with the city council the need to revisit and to kind of come to some solution, some mutually agreeable solution to the cloud drive and Little Harbor School arrival procedures. And so city folks have actually established a meeting on May 18th where we're gonna do some initial conversations and bring the city manager up to speed with what the issue is and so I'm certain it'll be resolved amicably down the road and I just wanted to share that letter with you. And that's really it for the superintendent's report, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so I have Kent here.
I have two. First of all, under the letter and articles from Dr. Turner, sometimes, you know, and I've mentioned Dr. Turner in the past, that, you know, we have very many unsung heroes within the city and I've known Dr. Turner a very long time now, due to both of my children who have attended their practice in Portsmouth, but more importantly, you know, Dr. Turner comes in, I don't think people understand, because you don't see it and you don't really under live part of it, what he actually does, both for the nursing department and the school as a whole. He takes away much of the contaminated materials such as the needles and so forth, he makes sure that that's taken care of. He keeps updated and informed to the health department within the schools. And I have known him also that, again, if you know Dr. Turner, he's kind of a quiet, meek person, but a very, very intelligent person and for the last twenty-five-plus years that I've been track officiating, Dr. Turner shows up, his children were involved in track and now his children are long gone from the school system and he still participates with the track program. I think we're very fortunate, I would like us to return a letter as a board as a whole thanking him for his outstanding service and his understanding and the part that he brings up, again, unfortunately, you know, precautionary with the iodine availability, this is something that's been battered around for a while and I think he, you know, he in a very nice tone is selling us, we really need to take those precautions and be ready. He's, again, he participates in lectures throughout the year that he puts on and brings in other physicians such as he's done on immunizations and so forth. Just, again, I would love to see us understand what it is to be a real citizen within the city of Portsmouth. Then I also like to, in regards to the letter that came from the chairman going to this, I hope, you know, we do come to an understanding with our butter, but I will voice a strong concern that if this passes and does not have that, there have been at least four other requests over the last eighteen-plus years from residents who would like to have an exit off the backsides of their, as you come out to plow there. I think that this opens a very large can of worms that then, because this has always been designated that this is school, right away, school property, that, you know, it's what we have to determine is best for safety. When that house was built, these were concerns that were brought up and an understanding that the system would be, up, the school system would be in control of that traffic. Nowhere at that time did the city have involvement because of that parcel of land that was wrestled upon. And again, you need to keep the history in mind. What is safe for the children is the exact wording that was used back twenty-five-plus years again on that, so, again, don't want to say it, but I think the board may, if this doesn't get resolved, have to play hardball because the city's more than glad to come down and plow that piece of property and take care of it, if that's what it takes. So again, I do hope we come to a fast resolution so parents don't have to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment that the city attorney's office, I think, is ultimately gonna render an opinion as to whether that piece of road is school or public. So, and then I believe if they do determine that it's school, obviously then we can do what we want, but if they don't, then I think the thinking would be that we would continue to discuss with the city what's appropriate and safe for kids and potentially create a solution that way.
So is there a timeline here?
Well, I just know the initial meeting's gonna be on May 18th, so I think it may take, you know, three or four weeks or so to kind of come up. I know the city manager, it was referred to the city manager's office for a report back to the city council, so I'm sure that'll be forthcoming in about a month's time.
Great. Okay.
Yep. Mr. Bartlett with the financial report.
I handed out the narrative such as it is, it's almost could just take and change dates because the, it's just, there aren't too many changes to what I predicted last month. Overall, the general fund's still about two percent lower than last year, so it's moving in the right direction and as far as the substitute line, it's even better than it was last month, so, you know, we're making, making good progress for that and I think a lot of that has to do with some of the professional development alternatives that Assistant Superintendent Zadovac has spearheaded this year to try to keep some of the training more in district, so that's been helpful. The departmental expenditures are, you know, they vary a little bit based on time of year and anticipation. History is, stays within a narrow window here and it's repeating itself from last month. So basically, in terms of how all these departments rest, in terms of the total budget for those departments for the year, we're in good shape and I believe that it will be tracking to, to, you know, a positive result. I don't, I don't anticipate having any, any big surpluses, but I'm anticipating that we should be very close to even and, you know, on the plus side of even this year, so.
That's good. Yes, Kent?
This question towards the, if we're fortunate to come out with even some type of surplus, I know we've gotten into the discussion in the past many times, how best to utilize that, I would hope that, and we probably won't know that till August, is that a better understanding of when your final bills were, I mean, seems like it's late July, early law, August before you know.
Usually it's late July before we, before we're, have the opportunity to vet all the numbers and then it'll be August in case where there are things out there that, you know, we didn't anticipate, that sometimes things just show up that nobody, nobody had planned on or, you know, it's gonna depend a lot on, on how our out-of-district placement bills come in, some of the special ed bills, some of those lag just because, just because they do.
But if we keep trending a little bit onto the positive, I'd like, you know, make sure that we as a board get to that conundrum of what do we do and, you know, if there are maintenance or issues that we've put off, that would be helpful. I'd like a list from you and the superintendent of, you know, possibilities that we make sure it falls into the guidelines of what we need to do to keep the maintenance or programming in line.
Certainly that list won't be lacking.
Right. And if I remember correctly, last year, we, the surplus was, went towards technology?
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Old business.
Yes, the first item is consideration of approval of delayed starts in the eleven-twelve school calendar. You've basically approved the school calendar but for, you know, how we will go about delivering professional development and so I'll let Mr. Zadovac make a few comments about that and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Sure, and your calendar is a proposed calendar with the delayed start dates noted, which is basically a continuation of the use of the third Wednesday, something that's on a predictable, regular routine for, for late starts, that is the two-hour block of time that teachers have been using for professional development, for the collaborative work and just going back, as you probably know, we've had a history of using this time, we've worked at creating it more productive for teachers and more focused in terms of the areas of improvement that we've identified and we've utilized both early release days, that is students getting out early and teachers working into the afternoon, as well as late starts. Last year, we had shifted to late starts and we did some work on evaluating that at the end of last year. We did a parent and staff survey, we did not do those surveys again this year, but in this year, we did try to address some of the concerns that were brought up last year and some of those concerns were around the transition time in the morning for students getting to school and teachers transitioning into the classroom. And so I think what we would look to do next year is to learn from what some schools have done this year and to think about expanding that, to ease that transition piece. I know in one of our schools, for example, the staff decided to come in fifteen hours, fifteen minutes sooner so that they could have the fifteen-minute break in between the end of the professional development and the beginning of the student day. And so just little things like that, that I think we can work at bringing to scale to create a smoother transition. In terms of some of the things that we talked about last year is looking at some of the work that teachers are doing on those days, I certainly would not call them out singularly for some of the improvements that I think we've seen evidence of recently, but I certainly think that that time has been absolutely critical to teachers honing those skills of collaboration and working, setting those goals and working towards them. And this year, as you are probably aware, the high school has used some of that time for the work around the Niasse re-accreditation work, which is a huge body of work that they're engaged in, self-study and they'll be continuing that work into next year as well. And just one of the benefits to having the delayed openings and from a financial point of view has been the food service program. There was quite a difference between the food service revenues from the early release days versus the late start days for the simple reason that on the late, on the late start days, students have lunch in school. So we've seen some of the power, some of the productive work that teachers have done. Certainly there is a continuing, you know, question around do we, should, you know, which are better, late start days or early release days, how do we best do it? If you ask the average student, they'd probably say early release days, they'd rather get out sooner in the day and, like I said, teachers, still, we need to work on that transition time. But the reason to have the monthly recurring late starts really is to But the reason to have the monthly recurring late starts really is to have that, that regular opportunity for teachers when they're monitoring progress of students, et cetera, that it's something that they can do on a regular basis. I know some of the questions get brought up around, can you pool that time together and just give a solid day somewhere? And that would be good for a particular purpose, but not necessarily for the purpose that we're trying to fuel with the late start days, which is, again, the kind of a monthly opportunity for teachers to come together, to collaborate and to check in on student progress. So, so the proposal is for the similar kind of delayed opening schedule that we've seen this year, and with your approval, we'll move forward in planning those out.
Ann and Rebecca?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, the calendar of proposed dates. And if there's a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Rebecca, yes.
So, I'm just looking at this, and all of them except for the month of May are on the third Wednesday.
Uh huh.
For consistency's sake, would moving it to the sixteenth of May instead of the twenty-third, or was there a reason?
You know, that's an oversight, it should be the sixteenth.
Okay.
Good catch.
I need consistency.
Steve, I appreciate, and I guess, I'm, I'm still not totally sure whether, it's where you get the most for your time on this, is a time management. And again, we've, we've talked about it and early release versus, you know, what gets done in the morning. And we're in our third year or second year of doing early?
Second year of the late starts.
Of the late start.
Currently.
Second year of that.
The third.
Yeah, this will be going into the third. And I think what we agreed upon is somewhere we'd get a sort of a breakdown of time management on it. I think that's what the discussion way back then, if you, you know, you're shaking your head, so you sort of remember that. I mean, I think this would be the turning point year of discussing, you know, is it the best way? Because I think at one time, we sort of discussed, well, maybe we'll try a little bit of both. I think you, at one time said, you know, and I don't know if that was supposed to be this year, or maybe it's next year, where you sort of look at it and say, look, maybe we alter it, or maybe there's just two early release days because we, there are certain restrictions that if it's at the end of the day, you can go on and do more because somebody might be agree upon saying, hey, we, we need to finish up on something. Whereas if the faculty is working on something and school's going to start in another hour, it ends at that time. So, again, I, I'm just at that point where I'm not, I'm not sure, because I hear both sides of it out there.
Right.
And I'm not sure where this may end up in another year.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll tell you, we're still looking at that. I think the, you know, we're not at the point where we'd recommend a change, just, I think one of the things that we would want to be sensitive to is not changing too frequently in the schedule of how this is. And like I said, we're still looking at, you know, the, the use of that time. And the early release, you know, you do have that time for lunch after the day and then, so the PD is, is broken up a little bit on those days as well. But in terms of, you know, making use of that late start time, you know, looking at what we've been able to accomplish this year and last year, and again, I don't, you know, it's not to say it's because it's late start versus early release or this or that, but it just seems like we have a lot of things that are going in the right direction right now. And so, you know, I think we have a hesitancy to shift that too much. And I do think we have some lessons learned from places that have helped create a, a more, a solid block of time for teachers. You know, just little things like, you know, students looking at that opportunity for some, you know, going into classrooms at the high school, for example, I think we, we would want to try to look at how do we better protect that time for teachers rather than let it be interrupted. And I just think we need to put some of those things into place and then continue to evaluate the fact.
Thank you.
Steve, I have one quick question, or two, actually. So, in term, what is the actual amount of time that you, that teachers are working in their PLCs or with each other looking at student data?
During the delayed starts, they get a two-hour block of time for that purpose. And over the, you know, the nine delayed starts, you know, you'd have eighteen hours, which worked out the same from the early release when we had six of them at three hours. So, it was, it was equivalent in time, but it's a two-hour chunk of time. And like I said, I think the, what, what we've done is, is try to, to learn and schedule things that we can make the most of that time.
Uh huh.
We've also tried to do some trainings for paraprofessionals during that time, but one of the things that it presents a challenge when we, because schools start at different times, when we try to bring paraprof, say, paraprofessionals together across schools is that, you know, we only have access to that overlapping time that they all have. So, you know, we're, we're figuring out ways to, to have training that's more specific to the needs, but then we get that larger chunk of time for teachers to work.
And then the other question is, so you were talking about transition time. So, in one case, one school decided voluntarily they'd come in earlier, so they, so what is, if I, if the school doesn't do that, actually, how much time between the end of the late start and the beginning of class?
Well, it just, the idea, I guess, being that, you know, you would, let's say, school starts at seven-thirty, you know, as a teacher, you would get in there before seven-thirty.
Right.
So, you know, some of the things that would be done in preparation for the day would be done in that time still between when the teacher arrived in seven-thirty.
Right.
At seven-thirty, things are put on hold for the day and teachers go into that opportunity for delayed starts. Certainly, there's the physical travel time back to your classroom, but other than that, I think we, we have access to a full two hours if we can utilize it.
I guess my question really is, so, but, so you're saying some teachers came in earlier because they didn't think there was enough transition time? So, what is, if, if they didn't come in fifteen minutes earlier, how much transition time is there between the end of that and the beginning of their first classroom students? Because is that the issue that?
Yeah, I mean, that's the issue is the, the two hours.
Ten minutes?
Right. It's, it's, the, the feeling was, well, we had to end the PD a little early so that we could transition back to the classroom. So, the agreement from teachers was, okay, well, let's start a little earlier so that we could end it still at that time and get the full two hours in.
Right. Now, is that all teachers or just one?
That's the whole school.
Oh, that, one school?
One, one of the schools.
One of the schools. Okay. Okay, so we have a second motion conversation, so all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Okay, consideration and approval of job descriptions.
Yes, so in your packet, you have five job descriptions for, where you're presenting for your approval this evening. The first you've seen is part of the food service report, and the, the singular change we made was to go back and talk under qualifications to, to make this kind of more flexible in terms of securing, you know, an appropriate candidate. So, we talked about successful management experience in a multi-food service operation or equivalent, and we also added such alternatives to the above the school board may find appropriate and acceptable so that you have, you know, it doesn't restrict any, any, let's say, out-of-the-box candidate from coming in and pursuing that job. So, that's, that's item one. The second two, I, I talked a little bit about and we'll have more conversation later, is the department head position. So, we really, we really vetted this fully. We met with all existing department heads, administrative team, put together a draft. We're really refocusing this to be more, less what one might call managerial functions, budget, inventory, et cetera. Those performance responsibilities are all captured actually in, in the description under eight. But we are really focusing on curriculum development, looking at instruction, assessment, formative assessment, and item five, which is really the, the backbone of the professional learning community's work, which is to kind of help facilitate that. So, the job description for department head is in front of you, as is the middle school team leader. Some of you may remember, my understanding of the history of this is, some years ago, Mr. Stokel would say, an assistant principal was lost and they developed team leaders, one for each of the six teams at the middle school who assist in a whole host of things. This is a little bit separate and distinguished from curriculum. They really, you know, you can see the bulleted items he has, but they really coordinate the team's activities and the scheduling and kind of the disciplinary pieces and, and those things. And so, John has worked and with, with the team and we put together that job description. I have the school nurse position. We're about to advertise for a halftime school nurse, so I think it's important we have that done. This was fully vetted through the school nurses, they've had a lot of input on this. And finally, the maintenance supervisor, which you saw as part of the budget process, there's been no change since you saw that back in January, February. So, we're hopeful you'll approve them as descriptions tonight, and we can go forward with the posting and advertising and go through that process ASAP. So, I'll make a motion to approve the five job descriptions as presented.
Thank you. Second? Okay. Any further discussion? Rebecca?
I just have a question. So, I'm looking through and I see that the nurses are under the teachers' contract and other things, but the ma, the supervisor, maintenance supervisor, is that, that's a separate?
That's a standalone, not part of any unit.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just a comment on the, on the department head, just, I think it's a great opportunity for us as a district to, to build in a little bit of a career path for teachers so that, you know, you don't just come in as a teacher and, you know, your life is solely a teacher, but we have the opportunity to bring people in who show competence, who have leadership skills, to give them a sense of responsibility so that they can take some of these new teachers that might be non-tenured, other teachers that might need to be on a, a PIP, but the ability to really bring people and have smaller organizations within themselves to, to really raise the level of acumen within the teacher community. So, I think it's a, a great way to, to have a, a career path and, and show teachers that, you know, there is value in their experience, so.
Ann and Carol?
Can you explain to us, is this the end of a cycle, Superintendent?
Yes, it is.
Can you explain how that'll work? Is, can anyone volunteer to be a department?
Well, right, so, so essentially, the, the teacher contract says at the end of three years, the, you'd open them up again and repost them. And that's not to say somebody who currently is in the job couldn't reapply, but there seems to be some preference to open it up and see if you can't share the wealth, so to speak. So, that, we want to go forward and post them later this week and get on with it so we can secure who, who's in those positions. I mean, I'll talk a little bit later on about an enhanced proposal for more department heads later on in the agenda, but do they answer that?
Anyone can, any teacher?
Absolutely.
Any certified teacher can apply.
That meets those requirements in the job description. Right.
Okay, Carol?
You follow me, Ms. Man?
Sorry.
I mean, what I'm suggesting is, you know, you can't.
It seems that the requirements fit any, fit every teacher so that there are no specific requirements, there's no.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
There's nothing that says that you have to be at school, at Portsmouth for two years, there are no criteria that have to be met that are beyond being a certified teacher and being proficient in your content area, which presumably you wouldn't have gotten hired if you weren't.
Right. Right.
I mean, is there any reason for someone, if, say, there are two people that get voted, if they, two people want to run for department head in the math department, do they get elected? Do they get chosen by this?
Well, it's ultimately going to be the decision of the, the principal to make that recommendation, and he'll have a, I'm sure, a small screening and interview committee to make that decision. But at the end of the day, they are a resource for the building principal and, and as well for, for Mr. Zadovik, the way we've designed it, they also report to the assistant superintendent to help him in terms of curriculum coordination.
So, if only one person applies for the position, there it.
That is, certainly.
I, that's a question. Is that true?
Well, I don't want to get into hypotheticals at this moment.
Oh, come on.
Carol, Ann, and then next.
I have a question and a comment. The question is, Ed, can you explain to me a little bit more sort of the background of sort of where are these coming from and why are we deciding them tonight? You know, for instance, like on the school nutrition person, is this exactly what has always existed and has always been?
No, not at all.
Have you tweaked it?
We, we tweaked it quite a bit.
Quite a bit, okay.
And as I said, at the, in the food service report, you know, we had folks that Eileen Bean, the nutritionist dietitian, look at this.
Yep.
Suggest the goals. And so, it's, it's an enhanced job description really, from what you saw before. Quite honestly, there are a number of positions that have existed that we don't, we're slowly developing a job description manual with all of the various positions that need to happen. So, this is a, this is much like policy, it's a slow slog.
Okay.
And to fully get waterproof job descriptions for positions.
Now, who is working on these? You and?
Oh.
Do you have a team?
Well, as I said, in the case of the department heads, that was vetted amongst all the department heads, the administrative team, those get floated out, kind of feedback back.
Okay.
The nurses, in large measure, had a lot of initial work on their job description.
Okay. Okay. I, I like what you did on the school nutrition position with, you know, leaving yourself an opening if some kind of out-of-the-box candidate comes up. I think that's terrific and really smart. The only thing I wondered about in your description is if you should have something about recognizing and understanding the importance of fresh, whole, local foods or something like that. And I think the Cape Elizabeth has a job description for their school nutrition person, and they have some pretty good language in there, if you wanted to look at something that already has that language in it. But I just wondered if you wanted to add something like that to this, to just make it a little more updated with what, you know, is the current trend in school nutrition.
Right.
Do you think it's in there?
Well.
No, it might be.
It was under, under, I think on page one, you know, the merchandise, the program to increase consumption of fruits and vegetables, I, I think there was another place too, but it's escaping me.
There's something about local, local resources.
Thank you, Paige.
Local resources and community resources.
Okay.
It's under nutritional component.
Uh huh.
Utilize community resources to support the school lunch program. Develop, utilize local resources.
But under the, the guidelines and goals that Eileen Bean gave you, and the goals aren't necessarily in here, did highly recommend by local.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm happy to add something, I mean.
It's not a big deal.
Do you see that covered in that?
It's sort of here. It's, it is sort of here. I just thought it maybe could be here a little bit more.
Mm-hmm.
In your face.
On the same topic, yeah?
Same time, I was just going to say, there's two sides of this. There's one is, you know, we, as a, as a board can have goals for what we want in the program that might be outside of the job description. So, I would just caution to say, you know, there's one is, you know, we have a job description that covers the basis for the employee, and then we might have goals of the school board to say of our food service program, you know, we would like to have food that's cooked from scratch, you know, X percentage of food that's purchased locally, from local resources, et cetera, et cetera, that, versus putting it into the job description.
Right.
True.
The other comment was just regarding the department head and the team leader, particularly the team leader, but both of them. I guess I just sort of read it and I think, gee, the word creativity doesn't appear anywhere in either one of these descriptions. And wouldn't that be a necessary ingredient of a, of a department head and a team leader to be creative and to encourage creativity? So, that's just my two cents.
Okay. Ann?
I'd just like to comment that in, in reading all of the job descriptions, I, I think it's really kind of interesting to really see how much everybody does. We, we know they do a lot, but when you actually look at everything written down, step by step, line by line, it really is a lot. I, I'm familiar with a lot of these jobs and people are working really hard. It's great to see it on paper.
Texter.
My question was answered.
Thanks. Anyone else? So, I would just sort of comment on the, what I'm excited about in terms of the team leader and department head is, it's really nice to see this expanding more towards a curriculum instruction position, because we'll never be able to afford that. The district used to have things like that, some districts do, like coordinators of different, across the grades, and I don't think this is the economic environment that we would ever be able to get that. And this is actually taking team leaders who are working with their peers and being able to sort of maybe move in that direction and working with the assistant superintendent. So, I actually think it's a nice, it's a nice progress, step forward, actually. So, motion, then it was seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New business.
Yes, in your packet, you have a, a letter requesting a one-year leave of absence from Kathleen Nadow. She's a grade-one teacher at the Little Harbor School, and I would recommend you approve her request.
So, move.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
It's item B, consideration approval of administrative contracts for the two thousand eleven-twelve school year. I would recommend approval of thirteen administrative contracts. Steve Bartlett is the business administrator, Kathleen Blake is the assistant principal at the high school, Catherine Callahan, principal at Dondaro, Diane Canada, our vocational school, Catherine Callahan, principal at Don Darrow, Diane Canada, our vocational education director, Jeffrey Collins, principal at the high school, Sean Donovan, assistant principal at the high school, Charles Grossman, principal at Little Harbor, Ann Ellis, assistant principal at the middle school, Nancy Roy, the principal at RJL Academy, George Shea at New Franklin is principal, Joanne Simons is the director of pupil support and instruction, John Stokel is the principal at the middle school, and Steven Zadovick is the assistant superintendent.
Okay, motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item C, you heard from counsel earlier this evening, which is consideration approval of the Futures Endowment Scholarship Fund. For those watching at home, you have a detailed memo from the assistant city attorney Kathleen Dwyer, who explains the Futures program, its history, and the need to create a Futures Endowment Scholarship Fund this evening. But actually, the city attorney requires we do it in four specific steps. The first is to approve the bylaws of the Futures Advisory Board as presented.
Oh, do you want to do it one, one step at a time?
That was the advisory council.
Okay. So a motion to approve the, the bylaws, the Futures Advisory bylaws that are here?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Then the next item was to essentially approve the membership of the current advisory board members. You have four ex officio members, Principal Collins and Stokel, Kathleen Dwyer and myself, and you have other members from the public, William Mortimer, Paul Amonahan, Gerald Howe, Peter Weeks, David Sweet, and Michael Mo Durn. And there is a vacancy currently for a guidance counselor. So a motion to approve the members of the Futures Advisory Board.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Step three.
The third step, right, is to approve the new Futures Fund as presented in, in the documents you have before you.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the last item essentially is to approve the merger of an existing fund, and basically, which was an administrative fund, to transfer those funds to the new fund you just created and terminate the latter.
Great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is essentially consideration and approval of a plan for curriculum instructional leadership. I provided you a memo detailing our recommendations to you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I'll give you the short version for those who may be watching at home. We have a number of department head positions that have existed, four that are K-12, four K-12 positions, and a number of six-eight content area positions. What we really are recommending is that you, we add five new positions. One, which would be a K-12 technology position, it's essentially a new position, to assist, you know, with the loss of the, you know, the technology director's position, that we have some PLC work and some curriculum work there, which can assist a assistant superintendent. And then what we are asking for is four middle school department head positions in the core areas of math, science, English, and social studies. One of the things we found when we met with all the department heads is how very difficult it is to provide leadership in both buildings when you're essentially locked into one. You might recall that under the contract, they work a full load, and currently, we find that all of the department heads, six-twelve, actually work in the high school. And the middle school, I think, admittedly suffers because they just can't find the time and energy to work there, and I think it's been neglected in terms of curriculum and instruction. So we did talk with the union a little bit, and we would, given the job description you just approved a little while ago, suggest you add a K-12 technology and four middle school positions. And I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about, these are stipended positions?
Absolutely, they're not new hires.
Not at all. Just wanted to be clear with that. Yes. Yes, Kent, I'm sorry.
When one applies for the department head job, they can be from K-12, anywhere in that part of the system. Is that not correct, under the current guidelines?
For a K-12 position, yes.
That's correct. And, and again, I, here and you, I briefly discussed this today because I wasn't able to make the pre-meeting, and I appreciate the time. And then I'm thinking to myself, is, is that, you know, here it is, we're trying to be budget conscious and so forth, and when one is the department head currently of whether it be math, or history, or English, how much interaction are we actually, and again, we know that they're working a full school load, which is newer, that's not always been the case.
That's right.
All right. How much interaction are they having below the high school if they're currently in the high school? Let's say it's English. And I think that's always been, I, I know my friend at the far end will tell you, it's always been a thorn in my backside that, and now what we've done, and recently, I think it was two years ago, three years ago, we took away, we took away that extra, they had a block that allowed them to do maybe sometimes with that. And now we've taken that away and made it even harder in some ways to meet with those colleagues that are in the same departments. I see this as an improvement towards it, but at a, a cost, because we weren't able to do what the original structure may have wanted it to do. I think the original structure should have been that if you're a department head, and you're in English, you're working with it K through 12. I, I know that through, you know, you have a department head that does nursing, that one, there's one in each building, so that's kind of an exception. Phys ed, we have a department head. And, and again, I don't think it's just a fault of the individuals, but where are we falling apart to now have to do this to make sure that it's, it's getting completed? And, and again, I just say, I, I know that in the past, we have had a science person that was a department head at the middle school. I know when it came to the arts or the, we had an individual that had that, it wasn't, help me out, it was not just art, it was the art teacher that was down there, she was the department head for...
Ms. Nettle? Senator Nettle, Ms. Nettle?
No, oh, it was back further. Anyway, there have been middle school, and it has been highly successful at the middle school, because that middle school person looks at K through six as they come in their door, they prepare, and they know that. So again, it's not finding fault, but here we are, newly creating something that I'm not sure I'm fully on board with. I do support the concept, but I don't know if I accept that we're doing it at a cost at this time.
So, so could you just go through a little bit of how we're paying for this, and will it cost any more? And I, and, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Certainly. I mean, so, so when we, when we had a meeting with the principals and had some determination, we, we came back and said, you know, initially, we're going to make this a six-twelve job description again. And folks simply stated, it's difficult to serve two masters, it's hard to really stay on top of the PLC and the data at a grade level or at a, at a school when you're in two different buildings. So we had a lot of conversation about what's the best way then to, can we break the stipend up? Can we kind of pass this out in, as it exists currently in budget? $4,000 for a department head and then $75 for each additional head. And quite frankly, folks thought administrators and the existing department heads that that was going to, it was a non-starter. It really wasn't going to get off the ground. We ultimately reached an agreement that it would be $2,500, not $4,000 for the middle school leadership, i.e. the four department heads. The K-12 technology would be paid like any other, which is $4,000, and then the $75 per, you know, teacher that they supervise. That comes to a cost of $14,000 then, basically. You approved a leave of absence for the year, you also accepted a resignation for the year. The combined salary of those two is some $120,000. When we went in and we plugged in the, the master's step three level to replace those folks next year, that's some $92,000. So we feel like we've got $28,000, of which we're only looking to spend 14, to, to get some sorely needed curriculum and instruction leadership at the middle school, and to assist with the technology piece that we're losing a little bit in the budget. So that's, that's the way we've thought about paying for this, and...
Right.
Thank you. I probably went longer than I needed to.
No, no.
Apologies.
No, more is better.
Okay.
Ann, I'm sorry, and then Ann.
I'm really happy to see that the middle school is, is getting some curriculum help. They've been kind of like the stepsister that's, the shoes don't fit. And it is hard to be at high school and have concerns about the middle school, even though you know those people are coming to you and you know they have needs. I, I think the next step down the line is to take care of the elementary school as well. There was a time that we had a math-science coordinator, and we thought we died and gone to heaven with that, with that curriculum help. And that went away with the budget cut. And down the road, it would be wonderful to see that again. I know that when we had a sabbatical, the, the science teacher from the high school really enveloped the elementary teachers. And again, they thought they died and gone to heaven, they got so much support and help with, with curriculum. So hopefully, that will be the next step, but I very much approve of this.
Ann?
Thank you. I also, I think this is a good method to keep the instruction and the knowledge of the instruction in those areas, because they really are, they are really are different, that six-eight and nine-twelve. My question, I guess, is in terminology, at the middle school level, there will be team leaders as well as department heads. So sixth grade, for example, may have a team leader who leads one of the teams in sixth grade, but they will also have a, there will be an overall middle school math department head that's in charge of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
Anything, any other comments, questions? So, motion to accept, the plan is submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the last item is not an action item, it's just a basic discussion, and I wanted to share this with the board, about transferring ownership of a painting we happen to have in Amy's office and has been there since I arrived behind the door. It's a Ben Franklin painting in front of the Warner House that was done by Harry Harlow, for those of you who might have followed his work here locally, right?
Oh, yeah.
And the story, as it's, as I understand it, is it was subject to damage when New Franklin had its fire.
That's correct.
The painting has been there, and it needs some significant restoration, probably $2,000, $2,500 worth of restoration. And I know Amy has talked with a few folks locally who said, you know, they've come and they've looked at it, and they said, oh, they'd be willing to restore it, and they've kind of done some examination of it, be willing to do it, and get it somewhere in the community where it might be seen versus behind the door. One of the last folks who came in said, well, you know, we'd be willing to do this, take this on, we'd put it in the Discover Portsmouth area, and then maybe direct people to the Warner House, but they wanted to see a transfer of ownership. And before doing that, or if that's even advised, I thought I'd take it here to talk to the board and see what you'd like to do with it, and at least put it on your radar screen that, you know, it's a nice piece of art. I couldn't tell you what it's worth or its value is, but how you'd like to proceed with it.
So I have Clay, Kent, Leslie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, is there any charge to this restoration? And will the people that are working on the painting, will they receive any type of recognition of actually fixing this, this painting?
Well, I think they, they estimate the cost at about $2,000, $2,500 to, to bring it back and restore it. And, and so I don't know who they were thinking would go do that work. And again, they, they would only do it contingent on them now maybe owning the picture.
Right. So they wouldn't do it for free and then give it to the schools to donate it to the Discover Center? They want to?
Yeah, and I didn't even talk to those vendors who would restore the painting. It was really more the art folks who have some knowledge about here in the community, and they, they gave us that estimate. That's not something I solicited.
Because I think the closest restorer lives down in Louisiana.
Oh, is that right?
And...
I would have no knowledge.
But she, she might be able to do it for free, but...
Okay, pass that on.
We'll see. Thank you.
Kent?
This is a subject that's come up a number of times, because the school actually, so people have a little history, we have about seven to a dozen of these paintings. There are, there's some in this building that actually belong to the school department. There are a number of them at the Anthonyum that belong to us, and we may have, I think, still downstairs. And I do think it's somewhere back under, when Peter Torrey, we did, we did, actually the Ben Franklin painting, at least seven years ago, did get an evaluation done on it. And it's, it's worth a fair amount. A Harlow painting is a, is a highly thought-after piece of artwork. There are a number of these pieces, again, that we have had. We have, somewhere, there's got to be a loan sheet out there, and I'm hoping we have that, because I think the Anthonyum may have two or three of ours, and I would like probably more. I think there are a couple within some of the schools and so forth. Why we ended up with these paintings is more historic than anything. And, and again, I would never want to see ownership, but I also don't want to see decay and deterioration happen to anything. And I believe the Anthonyum, when they have taken on ours, has done the cleaning. And, and again, it says these are property of the Portsmouth School System, there's a plaque, I believe, if you go in there, on loan, because we may not have a great place. But I think people don't realize, the school system is kind of art-rich that way, and it'd be nice to, maybe we should have a listing of these. I appreciate somebody wanting to take ownership, but I could never support that, because, again, it goes back to some of my own personal values of like a purest property. I always think if somebody donated it there, and we've been given ownership of that, we should bless it and take care of it. But I would ask that somewhere in the very near future, we sort of get a listing of the number of paintings that we have out on loan and so forth. And you may, quite honestly, I don't know if the record's, because I know between Patty and Peter, there was some discussion that maybe we can get that done in the near future.
I believe Mary Ann List shared with me that she keeps the inventory of all the city's property and where it may be. So I'll, I'll start there and see if we can get a, get a handle on it.
Because it shouldn't be behind a door, you know?
Right.
And it was one of the few things they rescued out of the New Franklin School, is it burnt to the ground. And Don Darrow, I believe, we rescued a painting or two at that time, too, when it burnt. Not that we want schools to burn.
Leslie?
So maybe Kent, you know this, is there, do we have any idea how this painting came into our possession?
It was actually donated by the painter himself back in the, just about the same time. One of the first schools is, is, the original New Franklin School is not, even though that one's burnt there once, is if you're going up over the Route One bypass, heading north on Woodbury Ave, you see it, Maplewood, not Woodbury, I'm sorry, Maplewood, you see it as you go towards Buzzzy's there. You actually can still see, it says New Franklin School on it. And that was one of the first two original schools. There are many schools that don't sit in our school gallery, but that's where that painting was originally given. And if you go across the street, one of Holt's, who was the artist's family, was in that area, and that's how they donated it from an original setting by Ben Franklin.
So when was the painting painted? Do you have any idea, like?
Ah, you'd have, it's, it's old.
Eighteen something?
Eighteen what?
Eighteen sixty-four.
Eighteen sixty-four, okay.
Eighteen sixty-four.
So there's a painting that's 150 years old, that it would cost us $2,000, $2,500 to restore, right?
Right.
And it's painted in front of, Ben Franklin, in front of the Warner House?
Yes.
Is that right?
Correct.
Downtown. I think it would be great to donate it. That's what you're saying, is donate it to the Warner House and they would restore it?
No, not the Warner House.
Transfer ownership.
Oh, sorry, transfer ownership. But to whom?
It's the Warner House.
To the Warner House?
To the Warner House?
Right?
No, is it? To Discover Portsmouth.
To Discover Portsmouth.
No, I think they were going to put it in, it was to the Warner House. And then they were going to put it over in the Discover Portsmouth.
The ownership would be transferred, I guess, to the Warner House before they would spend the money to do the restoration.
Okay. And then they would restore it. And then, is it possible we could have a plaque that said donated by the Portsmouth Schools or something like that?
Right.
I mean, could we make that a part of the?
Right. What if they sold it?
No, I mean, there would be a list of provenance of the previous owners.
No, I mean, there would be a list of, of provenance of, of the previous owners, but once we sell it for a dollar or transfer the ownership to the Warner House, they become the owners. And so then they donate it or it's on display on behalf of the Warner House and we would not have any...
That's true.
We'd be a previous owner.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, Tom, I'm sorry, Leslie.
That's all right. I just wanted to be clear about what we're specifically talking about.
Anne?
Uh, I think the most exciting thing about the painting is the fact that whenever you're taking children on tours of, uh, New Hampshire downtown, third grade, fourth grade, uh, community history and, and state history, uh, they're very excited to think that, that Ben Franklin supervised the installation of that lightning rod. And so this painting actually is showing him, you know, uh, instructing them to do it. I don't think he did the work himself. I think he was the boss. But the kids find that really fun and, uh, so wherever it's going to be, it ought to be in a place where you could say either take the children or, you know, let them know that's where it is and, and you can really see it. And it's, really shows the Warner House very nicely. So, be neat.
Nobody visits it in Amy's office though, right?
Right.
Amy, do people come and visit it?
Just to follow what, what Leslie's saying, uh, it's the ownership that I would have an issue with. We have them out in loan at very, so, and there are other locations and maybe tonight somebody will say, hey, look, we'll take it on for, for, uh, a loan. I mean, these loans that we've had, I mean, some of these have sat in certain buildings. In fact, I believe we may even have paintings that sit in Conquer that belong to the school department, uh, because it goes back that far that, again, people have donated them in, in the past and, uh, they've been up in valued and so forth. But again, i- i- I have no problem with putting it out loan, long-term or some type of an agreement. Uh, in, in fact, we don't necessarily need it back, but we keep it under our, uh, our ownership on loan out there and let, like I said, the Anthonyum's been really good to us. I believe they restored somewhere between four and seven paintings, as Anne and I were discussing, you know? They, they've done it for us at no cost.
And then they keep them.
Which is the school department.
So does that answer your questions?
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like you'd, you'd make it available for restoration to be placed somewhere in a public building, but, but really it would, you'd retain ownership and it'd just be an extent, extended loan. And I get that. That's fine. That's great.
I do think that's...
And go back and talk with the folks that we chat with and see if they're amenable to that. That's great.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, Rebecca.
If it ends up needing a final home, I wonder if New Franklin would be interested in having it.
We're looking for pictures in the new, uh, middle school, aren't we?
I was just gonna say artwork.
The art gallery.
There's our, uh, art...
Maybe.
Wait till the committee updates.
We'd have to examine the picture to see, the painting to see if it's, it's worthy.
Might save us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We'll work it on that.
We certainly can't afford to restore it.
Can I ask you what was, uh, the budget item on that?
Um, so, moving on to, uh, we have some committee reports. So, JBC's up first.
So, uh, the superintendent already talked about the groundbreaking ceremony on June sixth. You will get a formal invitation. I would encourage you all to save that date. Um, John Stokoe has quite an event planned. Um, the entire student body will participate, the middle school band will participate. We'll actually have a student from, um, uh, each team, from each grade, participating in the formal, uh, groundbreaking ceremony. So they'll get a, a little hard hat and a shovel. So it's, it's, um, it's, it's a, as John Stokoe would describe it, it's a big deal for the city and for, um, for the, uh, school board and for the middle school. So, uh, we really wanna celebrate that and it's a long time coming. And, um, the, the mayor and, um, um, our, our chair will be speaking and Mitch assures me that he will, uh, speak briefly. But eloquently. So, uh, be there. So the second...
You didn't think thirty minutes was brief?
Yeah, you could try it. So the next update is on the Grant Street Field. Um, the, um, the sod is scheduled to be laid, uh, beginning next week. And, um, after that sod is in place, um, there's a six-week growing period before the field is playable. So based on that, um, and presumably the good weather, the field will be ready, um, to play beginning July first. Uh, we've communicated that to, um, Russ Wilson in the rec department and Russ is coordinating the various adult leagues that would be using that field accordingly. Uh, the middle school update. So we've awarded, uh, three contracts for the, uh, site work, for the, um, the foundation work and for the steel. Um, the, the, the committee is still going through the value management process for the other components of the project. Uh, I mean, we're driving down to, uh, our, our, our budget target. Uh, we've been doing that probably for the last six to, six weeks or so. Um, we're, we're getting closer, but I will tell you, it's still a chore to get there and it, um, um, we think we'll get there at the end of the day, but it's been a challenge for the committee and for, um, Gil Bain, our construction, um, manager and for our architects. Um, the good news is that we, we will get there, um, without cutting program. So we are committed to delivering the program that, uh, was, um, was specified by the middle school staff and by, by this committee, I mean, by, by this board. Um, so that's good news. Probably we're, I would think, a couple of weeks away maybe from having a, a, a GMP for that piece of the project. And at that point then, uh, we know what the budget will be for the entire projects. Um, Leslie or Anne, do you have anything to add?
No. No, I think that's...
Okay.
Any questions? Is it gonna be a fifty-year building in the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Seventy-five.
Seventy, okay.
It will be, it will be a seventy-five.
A time capsule too.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, it, I, it, you know, we've been, we've been at it now for a long time and I know a lot of the people on this board have been at it for a long time. It, it's gonna be a building that I'm convinced the city is gonna be very, very proud of, um, both in the quality of it and, and the functionality of it. And I'll have to say that with the city approving funding for the youth recreation facility that will be connected to this building, um, it's really gonna be an asset for, for the, just not only the schools, but for the city. So, um, it's, it's, it's really good stuff, but I can't wait to see the, the steel start going up.
You will.
Right.
And we will soon. So the fencing is up. I mean, you're gonna see, on June sixth, uh, when you're there on site, there'll be activity and, and stuff going on. Construction workers and, and so, um, Mitch's dream will be beginning to come true. I guess it was your dream.
I don't know that.
Or someone's dream.
It was not my dream.
All right. Thanks.
It's a community's dream.
It's a community's dream.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Technology?
Uh, thank you. Uh, we met a couple of weeks ago and there's a number of things that, uh, we've been, uh, working on pretty, uh, hard. One of the things that I'll, uh, mention is that, uh, we are going to, uh, through a request through Anne Mayer, we're gonna extend a seat, uh, to include SAU fifty, uh, on the technology committee. Uh, so there's a gentleman, uh, if you could help me out with his name, Len...
Len Kutcher.
Kutcher, okay. Wasn't sure how to pronounce his last name, uh, who will be, uh, joining us. Uh, there's a couple of things that we're working on right now through the committee. Uh, one, we're just, uh, getting, uh, a group, uh, assembled, but, uh, we're gonna, uh, we've done some preliminary, uh, work to find out what it'll take, but we're gonna, uh, start to put together a committee to start looking at, uh, uh, the district, uh, website. Uh, and of course, that's, uh, uh, has a, a lot of ramifications in terms of, uh, what kind of content and what kind of interactivity, uh, interactivity we wanna have with the site. Uh, but we're gonna start that process of just, uh, taking a look at the site and, uh, getting a committee assembled to understand, you know, what types of things we want to be able to do, cause we, of course, know what our site does today. Uh, and there's a lot of things that, uh, through, uh, communications, uh, through, uh, being able to get information, uh, be, having students and parents and other people in the community be able to get, uh, information as well as just thinking about, uh, the Friday report that we send out, uh, to the community and to parents of, uh, of the school community about what's actually happening. So we, we want the website to be, uh, a greater presence and a, a greater resource for us all so that, uh, that process is, uh, in its infancy and, and just, uh, just getting started. The, uh, cloud computing model that we've been, uh, taking a look at and investigating, uh, we now have a pilot, uh, that is, uh, up and running and working, uh, at the high school. Uh, and one of the things that, uh, we're at a point now with the, uh, technology, uh, committee, uh, that we wanna take, uh, and bring this, uh, information here back to the board. So, uh, our next meeting here on the fourteenth, uh, we are going to have, uh, a sort of, uh, a technology special, uh, presentation. So we're gonna actually be able to showcase, uh, and show you, uh, what we've been doing, uh, in the committee and actually see a live demo. Uh, we'll talk about, uh, what are the things that we're trying to take a look at. Uh, but most importantly, uh, before we get too far down the road of what we really, uh, want or, uh, select, uh, we're gonna, uh, Mitch has, uh, reached out to Kathy Higgins, uh, at, uh, New Hampshire DOE. Uh, she is gonna come in and give a presentation, uh, on, uh, what technology looks like from the Department of Education's perspective, uh, some perspective on what other, uh, school districts in the state, uh, are doing, uh, so that, uh, we can give the board here a broad, uh, view of what technology in New Hampshire looks like, uh, on the education side. Um, and then we'll go through this, uh, demonstration, uh, of this cloud model that we're taking a look at, uh, give you some background on, on how we got to, uh, this pilot, uh, why we chose this one and, uh, what, what some of the benefits and what we see, uh, happening as we evolve this model here in the school.
Questions? Great. Thank you, Tom. Arts and athletics.
Uh, we met on the fifth of May and, uh, reviewed student participation in arts and athletics for the last, uh, actually since January. And, uh, we have fully one-third of all students in our high school and one-third of all students in our middle school participating in, uh, spring athletics, which is pretty exciting. Uh, we have, um, Almost Maine, which is the performance, the play coming up this weekend. I think everybody got our invitation to that. Uh, most of you know that the percussion band won world championship in Ohio several weeks ago. Our baseball team is three games away from the national...
Three from a tie and four to win?
Four, four to win. Three to tie, four to win. I think you're right. To be the most winning baseball team, high school baseball team ever in our country. So four games away from that, um, which is pretty exciting, so...
Longest winning streak.
They announced it last night at city council that the team had won. That was pretty fun. So there's a lot of good things happening in our arts and athletics world. Um, the arts and athletics handbook will be updated this summer with FERPA laws and the NHIAA media relations rules so that, um, coaches can see, have a better sense of how to handle specifically talking with newspapers and things like that. That will be done with Russ this summer. Um, the performing arts group is gonna work on their own handbook, which they don't have right now, but that's a project they'd like to work on over the summer. We have talked about reinstitu- reinstituting, um, coaching, um, more formalized coaching evaluations by Russ. So that's in the process, um, and we're hoping to have that kind of piggyback on the evaluation process that we've used for teachers and have some common language used there. Uh, we've talked about creating a covenant or a compact between parents, teachers and students so that the expectations of each group is kind of clear, um, with, you know, what parents should be helping students with, which students should be focusing on and what coaches should be doing and creating more, um, communication between all. And our next meeting will be in July, uh, to kind of consolidate some of this and to, um, finish up the, um, I never know what to call this, discipline, um, and extrac- extracurricular discipline policy, which hopefully by then we will have vetted in the policy group and voted on. So, um, our next meeting is in July. Anything else, Dexter?
Yeah, so the only thing I'd add is that we, um, asked Russ Wilson about, uh, how the turf field at the high school...
Yes, yes.
Was, uh, being utilized and if in fact the middle school was getting, um, the scheduling it needed. And, uh, indeed they are. In fact, the middle school gets first priority, which is the commitment, and then they fill in around that. So, um, it's working as planned. And he described, um, the utilization of that field, uh, and accommodating the, the sports schedules for both the middle school and the high school in a way that natural grass fields just wouldn't be able to do. And so he described one night where there were, um, I think, four lacrosse games, beginning with the middle school, right up through the boys varsity, ending under the lights, literally back to back to back, that...
He'd like another one, please.
Yeah, and he, and so what he's asked for, and we told him to go to the city council.
Right.
But, but the, the good news is it's from a scheduling perspective, it's working to the middle school, so the commitment's being held and, and it's really working for, uh, the entire school department.
Right. I know it was from day one.
From day one. Terrific investment.
Thank you.
Okay. Anne?
All right. The, the letter that Mitch wrote to the, uh, the charter, the advisory, uh, charter committee, was sent to them. And then, uh, at Mitch's request, I went to the meeting about a month ago and gave them information about the, uh, the four points that we, that we had. And then I went back again last week to discuss it a little further. So, the final solution is, uh, section one about the student member, the employee member and the SAU member seats. Uh, the city attorney said that it was not appropriate for any of those people to be in the charter anyway, because they're not voting members. They even discussed, well, maybe they should take the student out. I said, no, 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 do not take the student out. Bottom line, also, non-residents can't vote anyway. Uh, so, bottom line is, we can make our own policy to have these three people seated at our board, since that's our wish. So, uh, that's what I am recommending. The second issue was regarding the adding of language to the charter so that we were filling a school board position left vacant after checking the election of the person vacating it to go to the newest election next and then to continue current practice. The committee voted it down. First of all, they don't want more than four amendments because their job is to advise and if they have more than four amendments, they'll have, they will trigger a full-blown charter commission, which is not their wish. And so they suggest that when the information, their report is given to the city council, that we just say that we would like that added. If it is not, we can then again do it policy-wise. So, basically, the city council can either ignore their report, accept it, whatever. The third issue, clarifying language in the charter, that the school board has authority to negotiate and agree upon compensation and contract with the superintendent of schools. The committee agreed to change the language to say current practice, but that's only unless there are too many amendments, in which case the current practice may disappear. Who knows? Well, what they say in the charter should happen is not what actually happens. So, and they really wanna talk about it a whole lot. They were more interested in the police and fire commission. Uh, the last issue was, uh, appointing a school board member, uh, to the ten-year charter commission. Uh, the answer was, there is no such a body at this time and the future is unknown. So, they felt as though also, if a school board member was put on that, uh, then the police and fire commission would wanna do that also, would make a very large committee. and fire commission would want to do that also, would make a very large committee. And bottom line, it's a negative. So, the advisory committee was Nancy Clayberg, Tony Covelo, Peter Lachlan, John O'Leary, and Josh somebody, and Attorney Sullivan was their source of information. So, all in all, two interesting evenings.
Yes. Kent?
I guess I just need a clarification, and I guess, shame on me. So, in this pseudo-charter committee, because-
Advisory.
Advisory, well, they only were, if they had gone over four amendments, then it would have been a full, and I did not know that until this moment.
They felt it would trigger. I don't know.
So it was a feeling, not an actual. I'm going to be honest. I'm actually very disappointed in some of their, I mean, I could understand, you know, their discussion points back and forth, but I think when it comes to, again, item two that we put on to them, I guess I'm betwixt and between of their decision-making. If it overloaded it, the city council then could recommend a full committee, non-advisory, to go out and do it, because it's, you know, the will of the people. So, I'm disappointed in the language that has come back on that. It, and again, on a public speaking type side of this, those who feel that this then was just to try to trigger a difference of the police and fire commission, I think this was proven by that discussion, and that's my personal opinion.
But we can do things with policy.
Correct.
Yeah.
Anne?
I, too, had questions about what would trigger the charter commission, and in checking the statute, municipality can have an advisory, but there is no criteria that says it has to be four amendments, or, you know, voters can't petition for charter commission, and there, you know, there's obviously a procedure in place. I guess one of my concerns is, and I think Attorney Sullivan spoke to this, was that if you're going to have, in our case, section 6.3H, where you have a membership, you speak to the membership, and you talk about the student member of the school board, if you're going to have a charter to the city, and it's not going to be reopened or potentially even readdressed for another 10 years, this document is 25 years old, then I think that with, for consistency, you either remove the student, or you add the teacher representative and the SAU 50 representative. For consistency's sake, in a charter document, I think you need to have some kind of, it's hard to explain to the citizens why we would take it out, because it looks like we're taking the student off the-
Exactly.
...school board, and so it's a little difficult to explain, and certainly, they, you know, they might not be in favor of that unless they understood why it was happening. But I do agree that the four amendments seem a little strange, and they're, the reasons for not, if the purpose is to ask the departments if they have any changes to the charter, then perhaps there should be a charter commission, and then address all of the issues that come before them.
Well, this is the city attorney, his answers.
So, I would just sort of say, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm just as bewildered. And, at least on these two issues, the one about the adding the teacher and the SAU 50 representative, and also the issue of language with the new election, I think that those are actually important. And even if this advisory committee does not recommend it, I think as a board, we might want to consider writing another letter directly to the city council, suggesting we'd like to see those at least considered or recommended, and maybe we'll even, do you know, is there a date as to when this comes before the city?
I know that they're preparing a report.
Okay.
So I can-
So we should be prepared.
...find out, Nancy, when the report goes in. And actually, I would suggest that when the report is on the agenda for the city council, I'd be glad to let you take over.
That's what I mean. Because I think Kent's point-
It's a great experience, but, you know, I was speaking in your name.
I think Kent's point is really, and we've talked about this, you know, the second one particularly about how we would like to handle-
Yes.
-when a school board member resigns, is really more about having people feel comfortable that it's the will, that it's the will of the people that we're trying to accommodate. So, and we could do that ourselves anyway, by policy, but it would make sense to have it really in the charter. So, Carol?
I think that's the most important one to get in the charter, between the two.
I agree with that.
And I think it's in part because, you know, if we had some situation where somebody contested how we did it, I think having the authority of the charter would be stronger than us just having created a policy that said that. So I think if we, you know, if we want to just really hone in on just one thing and push-
To make one.
-that seems to me to be the most important, because the other one, we can have who we want to have on our board.
True.
This is our authority. We can do this. You know, whether it's in there or it's not in there doesn't make any difference. So, I mean, I don't see a big ramification on that one. But the other one, I could see a ramification. So that's what I would think.
Okay. So, as we get closer to it, and we find out when the report is? Yes, Rebecca?
I just have a thought. If it does say in the charter that we have a member of SAU 50, what happens if within that 10 years, we no longer have an agreement with SAU 50?
Oh, well, it says as long as they're going to our high school.
Okay. So that is in there?
It's in the letter.
Okay.
Okay. Item 12. Yes?
How about these things?
Adjournment.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I know.
What?
I'm glad you're evaluating.
I'm glad you're evaluating.